Good evening. How is everyone? Nice to see the chamber full tonight. Well, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
President.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Councilman Wu.
Here.
Mayor Protem Resini.
Here.
Mayor Pitts.
Here.
Tonight's invocation and dedication. The city recently lost a member of our community who served this city for many years. Richard Merg has served the city on the LEAC committee for many years. Richard was a law enforcement officer. I thought some prayers go out to his family and we thank him for his service. Mayor Protem, I know he served with you on the LEAC committee. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. Richie, as many of us knew him as, was a, he was just, he was a great guy. I mean, bottom line, that's the best way to describe him. He was an old school cop with an absolute utter respect for the job, a very fair individual, not somebody that ever would pick a fight, but he was always the guy to finish it. Little did many people know that he, should say, many people didn't know, but they should have known better. He was a very fit guy, very thin guy, but boy, did he have a hook. His background, he was a distinguished veteran from the U.S. Army. He was a decorated member of the San Ana Police Department as well as the Cleveland Police Department, but he was also a Golden Gloves boxing champion, not the guy you want to pick a fight with. His record is 150 and 0. He, and I'm just talking about the people that he met in the streets. I don't know what his, I don't know what his record was, but he was a great guy. He was a wonderful neighbor. He was a good man and he really represented our community well and I'm very sad to hear of his passing. I just wanted to say a few words about him and wish his entire family all the best.
Thank you, sir. Today, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Jones to lay some pledge of allegiance.
Yes, everyone, please stand. Raise your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Villa Park City Council staff welcome you to this meeting and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found outside the entrance to the city council chambers. Speakers will be called in individually during the public comments section of each item they wish to speak on. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Speakers will also be able to submit comments in writing by, should have been done by 3:00 PM today, and those comments will be read aloud during the public comments sections of each item. So, again, this is probably the funnest part of our entire meeting, is recognition of Villa Park Distinguished Citizen. And over the course of the past 50 years, the city of Villa Park has been very fortunate to have families that have given so much to this community. We honor what's one such member of a very generous family that's been given so many ways as our next recipient for Distinguished Citizen. The Frackleton family have been part of our community for a long time, since 1970, and tonight, we're honoring one member of that family. I would like to invite Robert Frackleton to the podium so we can honor his service to the community.
I would like to apologize to the council. You know, I want to build a gazebo and obviously, everyone's against it, so.
No, no problem. You know, it's wonderful to have everybody here in support of you and the community. And, you know, your parents moved here in 1970, John and Ann. Robert was just one-year-old when he moved here. He went to Villa Park Elementary, Saravella Junior High, and he graduated from Villa Park High School in 1987. Met his best friend, Mark Cullai, I know he's here somewhere, on the first, on the first day of kindergarten, and he hasn't been able to shake him since. So, growing up, his mom, Ann, was president of the Villa Park Women's League, and his dad, John, was, was on the VP Planning Commission and spent two terms on the city council and was mayor a couple of times too, as well. And we thank you both for your service to this community as well. Both parents are instrumental in founding the Villa Park Grad Night, the Boat Parade, and the picnic. Robert said that their sense of community service and involvement rubbed off on him, and I know his parents are extremely proud of his community involvement. Robert received a water polo scholarship to UCLA where he met his wife, Madonna, she's here somewhere tonight, who was on, who was on the diving team. They went to Boston College after that, where they got, where she got her M.D. at Boston University, and he got his MBA at Babson, graduating in 1996. They moved back to California and bought their first home in Huntington Beach. David, their eldest, was born in 2000. Evan was coming along in 2002, so they must move to a much bigger home, to their family home here in Villa Park on May of 2002. Robert has been a VP homeowner for 21 years and spent his first 20 years, so he's been here 40-plus years of his life, so he knows the community very well. Their third child, Samantha, was born in 2006. All kids went to Serrano, Saravella, and VP High School. And since then, Robert has immersed himself in community and become a big influence over the years. He was his kid's soccer coach, youth basketball coach, and he and his wife kept score for the Little League. Robert ran the VP NJV Youth Basketball League for years as chapter director. He served as chief both for the Boys Indian Guys and his daughter's Indian Princess Tribe, and he was, and he was nation chief as well. I don't know how you found time to have children or do anything. In 2002, Robert joined the volunteer firefighters at Villa Park Fire Station 23. He earned his EMT certification and was fireman for eight years. He was named Rookie of the Year and twice named Firefighter of the Year by his fellow volunteers. Robert then joined Rick Barnett in adopting Marines for Camp Pendleton on Thanksgiving Day, and he and his kids took over running that program several years ago. Marines, this program has grown well over 100 Marines adopted by families here in Villa Park each year, totaling over 40 families right now, as it stands. This program requires an extensive amount of planning and time to coordinate everything and has grown into a tremendous program, giving back to those that serve our country. Robert is just wrapping up his year as Villa Park Rotary President, and that's been fun for all of us. He also serves on the community foundation board of the Villa Park Community Services Foundation, and he's co-chair of the Villa Park High School Campus Care Day with Jordan Wu. In his spare time, Robert is the proud owner of Reeves Store Equipment Company, a manufacturer of store fixtures and display hardware located in Pico Rivera. He's been there for 27 years now, and he's been named Pico Rivera Man of the Year in 2002. He said he is proud to call Villa Park his home. He's even more proud of his wife, kids, parents, and his sisters' families. They all love the hidden jewel. I asked him how he wanted to be remembered. He quoted John Wooden's philosophy, "A genuine consideration for others, an eagerness to sacrifice personal interests of glory for the welfare of all, poise just being yourself." And Robert, you demonstrate that every day. Robert, we're all fortunate to have you and your family as part of our city family, and we're proud of your accomplishments and all that you do. Thank you, and we are honored to have you as our distinguished citizen.
Thank you, sir, for all you do for this city and an amazing foundation and Rotary Club number. We appreciate all you do for us, and for the whole community, for the city of Villa Park.
So, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Brendan Moeller, the Military Veteran Liaison for Congresswoman Young Kim. I just want to say, how can I be you when I grow up? Yeah, so just on behalf of the Congresswoman, I want to present you with a certificate of congressional recognition. So, in recognition of being named the June 2023 Distinguished Citizen for the city of Villa Park, thank you for your commitment to our community. As a fellow Viking and fellow Spartan, I want to say, thank you.
And now I get to lower the mic so that I can speak. I'm Pat Buttrus, and it's my privilege to represent Chairman Don Wagner and present a certificate, but it's even more so because I've known your parents forever. I've known you for a very long time, and I've been so proud that we both were president of our Rotary Clubs during the same year. Robert has just done so much in this community, and I know Supervisor Wagner, if he could have, he would have been here. He was very, very proud to be able to present this to you and say thank you so much for the service you give Villa Park and your wife and your children all. It's wonderful, and we're very, very proud of you, and of course, I am very proud of you. Thank you so much.
All right, one more. Good evening, everybody. My name is Newton Viencou. I'm here on behalf of California State Assembly Member Philip Chen. And Mr. Frackleton, I just want to start off by saying congratulations. After hearing the story, all the accolades and accomplishments that you've done, or not just accomplished, but how you've also given back to, you know, different sports teams, the community, I can't think of a better person to be receiving this award. On behalf of the California State Assembly, we just want to thank you for your countless hours of dedication, commitment, and just major contributions to the city of Villa Park. So, thank you, sir.
These are tall people.
Robert, would you and Madonna please stand somewhere right here so that she can take a picture of both of you?
Can we get my, my parents and my kids to come up here and stand with us?
Yeah, exactly.
The Frackletons look like Frackletons.
No harm, no foul, just clean the countertop, that's all.
Took me this long to get over here.
I just think it's a great mystery.
Hey, drinks on, Robert. Okay, let's get on with the countdown. Come on, folks. We gotta get out into business now. Jordan, can you hear us okay? All right, next presentation. Can you follow that? Can you follow that? Yeah, I just threw water all over Ben's.
It's all right. I had a shower, then I had another shower. cooled me off.
You need to turn your air on. Yeah. Cullai made all the posters.
Hey, what's with the Secret Service agent? Why is, is he remote or what's going, what's going on here? Clearly, he's remote, I'm joking. Is he traveling or?
Yeah.
He looks like a Secret Service agent with the little.
Okay. AJ, take it away. I know that's a tough act to follow, but.
Well, good evening. So, we had a relatively, I'd say, a good month in, for the last month here in VP, but it was also some interesting calls, some. We had a total of 338 calls for service. 228 of those were proactive calls, so the majority of them are still deputies doing proactive work, not necessarily calls for service. So, of the 110 assigned calls, 22 of them were actually 911 calls. So, again, we want to encourage people to, hey, if you feel it's an emergency, by all means, call 911, but also, don't make something out of nothing. If it's, if it's just a normal call for service, a report call, please call the business line rather than call 911. But on the same note, and I'll get into this in another topic, we've, we've had some, like I said, we had some ongoing investigations, I don't want to get into any major details, but we had a call where somebody did choose to call us and give us good information, and we made a great arrest and something was averted. But then we had another one where 911 was not called, nobody was called, and we got lucky on that one. It could have been a lot worse. I just want to encourage people, if you see something, time is of the essence, seconds matter. Don't call your significant other, don't call your parents. If you see something that just makes the hair on your, call us. I'd much rather my deputies come out and say that it's nothing, but thanks for calling, than to have there be a 10-minute, 30-minute, two-hour delay on something that, there's a big safety issue, right? So, hopefully, that hits home, and we'll, I'll connect that dots on some other stuff we have too. But other side notes, we had no traffic incidents, accidents over the last month. I thoroughly believe that's because we were issuing a lot of traffic citations, 65 citations, 13 parking citations. Of the major criminal incidents we had, one residential burglary, I basically account to diligence. We really have to make sure we're locking up our, the one burglary we had, open window. You're basically inviting them in. The other major thing we had was a theft in the Ralphs', and it was basically an unattended purse. We have to be, I know it's a great community, and I don't want people to be distrustful of people, and I don't want people to be paranoid, but you have to watch, watch yourself, right? Protect when you're putting in your pit at the grocery store. There's people that will come to nice neighborhoods like this and look over your shoulder and watch what pit you put, and they will follow you out to the parking lot and distract you and find a way to get that card. So, we really need to be diligent and, like I said, not paranoid, but just, just look after yourself. Guard your information, lock up your vehicles, lock up your homes, and just, like I said, be, be very proactive in that type of stuff. Other than that, like I said, I know that this time of year, a big concern is the Fourth of July, right? Next year, we're going to be rolling deep. There's going to be a lot of deputies in Villa Park, there's going to be a lot of deputies everywhere. Just a reminder on some of our rules, right? So, safe and sane are allowed on the Fourth only, right? From noon to 10:00 PM, that's the only time fireworks are allowed in Villa Park. And just so you know, Orange doesn't allow anything. So, a lot of fireworks you're going to be hearing going off, especially with some of the big booms, are probably going to be coming from our neighbors. I'm not sure if Orange would appreciate a phone call on that, but if, if you want to call us, great. If you want to call them, let them know too. But as far as like anything outside of those hours on the Fourth, call us. We're not going to know unless you guys call us. Most of the time, it's going to be education, right? If it's a safe and sane type stuff and somebody's having fun on the Third, we're going to try to educate, right? It's going to, we're not out to ruin people's good time, but if people can, you know, insist on, you know, breaking the rules, then that's when we start getting into confiscating what they have. We have bomb squad, hazardous device people that come out and collect this. Fourth of July is a, they come around and they collect a lot of bad fireworks, right? Stuff that's dangerous. And if you see stuff like that, don't, don't call us the next day. Call us when you see it and tell us where they're at so we can handle business. Otherwise, we got nothing. Like I said, a call on the Fifth or in the Sixth, saying that my street was loud, what are you going to do about it? Doesn't do, it doesn't help us and it doesn't help anybody, right? So, and like I said, we want people to have a good time. I love the Fourth of July. God bless America. I love a good fireworks show, but, you know, rules are rules sometimes, right? Like I said, education's the main thing, but anything outside of that, we're going to, like I said, the deputies are going to handle business. I said, but I think we sent something to you, they're, they're going to post it about when to call 911, when to call the business line. You know, obviously, if it's a major emergency or you see a fire starting, call 911. If you see illegal fireworks or fireworks outside of the normal operating hours, just call the business line, so. And then, other than that, happy to take any questions or concerns.
Councilwoman Jones.
Hi. Yes, I was just wondering, what should a resident do? Because there's a lot of concern in our community over illegal fireworks and the fact that the safe and sane fireworks may be masking the illegal fireworks. So, what should a resident do if they catch, you know, someone doing illegal fireworks? Like, do you have to actually catch them in the act in order to say anything to them or?
Oh, no. If they, if we get a location, somebody, like I said, make, remain anonymous, say at this particular occasion or this intersection. Another thing, we want to make sure we don't block any, you know, traffic, make sure we operate them in a safe place. But if we, if there's a party at whatever address and we get that from whoever's calling, my deputies can go talk to anybody. It's just, we're just making, we're just, it's a contentious encounter at that point. But then, if you have one, you usually have more than one, so it's fairly obvious. So, and like I said, most people, especially around here, are just trying to have a good time, and it's that education piece. But if it's something that's dangerous, I mean, I mean, you know, the chief sees it all every year. There's stuff that, maybe not in Villa Park, but it's, somebody loses a finger, loses a hand, a fire gets started, that's not the stuff that we want people playing with. So, a lot of those things are basically, you know, some of the stuff people get, it's the equivalent to a stick of dynamite or something like that, so we don't want people playing with that stuff, especially kids, so.
And for the benefit of the audience, can you or our city manager elaborate on how many, how much extra enforcement we have around the Fourth? Because I know we got an email, but I don't think our viewing public knows.
I'll be happy to. We have, last couple of years, starting about 2018, we started adding an extra deputy, three days on the Third, Fourth, and Fifth. So, we will have an extra deputy with the, on those days, patrolling the area. So, we'll have two deputies rolling the streets, double what we would normally have, and that's intended to do exactly what the captain says, is to intervene where there's problems or identified. Again, it doesn't do any, it does some good for those driving around, but we need them to be calling and people, so they know where to go. Obviously, just driving around, you're going to miss things or whatever, but we have a full deputy, the Second, Third, and Fourth, fire, I mean, the Third, Fourth, and Fifth. The fireworks should only be going off on the Fourth, the legal fireworks, and nothing should be happening are the Third and the Fifth. So, they're going to be more proactive on the Third and the Fifth, obviously. So, that's it, and you can call, they have the, the number here, we'll be posting it on the feeder. So, we would encourage you to, if it's like an emergency, call 911. Otherwise, the other number will be the, the dispatch number, and that's been posted, will be posted multiple times in the next couple of weeks, next, yes, on, next week anyway, on the feeder.
Great, thank you so much.
If anybody hears that, 714-647-7000.
Captain, I have a question. So, let's say one of your deputies does see in, in the act, somebody doing illegal fireworks. Is this a situation where it's confiscation? Is there a fine? Is it just like a talking to? What, what is the protocol?
Depending what it is, if it's an illegal firework, they can get a, it'll be confiscated and they'll, they'll get a citation.
Okay.
And there's a, like I said, I'd be lying if I knew every, every year, what we do is we provide our deputies with kind of a handout that provides all the specific, you know, kind of Fourth of July, you know, you know, violations, that, because it's stuff that we don't see throughout the rest of the year, most of the time. And what they do is they, they refer to those sheets, depending on what it is, depending on how dangerous it is, we might have to call somebody out. Like, we don't want our deputies handling stuff that's dangerous, right? We don't want the public, so if you find something, leave it. Like, a lot of times, you'll see just like simple, like, and maybe the chief could elaborate on it, but it may look like a water bottle, but people try to create little, you know, exploding devices out of these, like with, you know, dry ice and stuff like that. Don't mess with it, leave it there. Our guys are happy to come out and collect it, so we want everybody to be safe. You never know what these things are going to do, especially like homemade devices or anything with like a, that even remotely looks like a pipe bomb or a stick of dynamite or even some firecrackers. These things are not made, you know, in a, you know, a factory-approved setting, they're, who knows where they're made? And like I said, that's where, you know, people lose fingers and eyes and it just, we just don't want that. So, we, we will come collect it, whatever the violation is, they will be cited for that. And I said, it's, it's definitely incident-specific.
Thank you.
So, I would say too, Orange does not allow fireworks, so I would encourage people, if they see something happen, we have a lot of Orange areas that are pocketed in to Villa Park, call the Orange Police Department. You know, it's great to call the Orange County Sheriff, but then that means they have to call or get ahold of someone else. You know, I mean, a call to Orange is very helpful. Frequently, I mean, I'll hear on the Fifth or Sixth, somebody will come in and say, oh, it was like a nightmare yesterday. Well, it's too late at that point. You have to call at the time. I mean, hear people saying, it's like a war zone in my neighborhood last night or night before. Well, it's over. What do we do at that point? So, I would encourage, and I hate to go over and be redundant, but a phone call makes a world of difference when the deputies are on the streets. We have the manpower, but it doesn't do any good if they don't know where they're supposed to be and see what's going on. So, I would encourage a phone call.
The other, the other point I'd like to bring up too, and I didn't, I didn't realize it, but I think we all need to be mindful of it. We have a lot of veterans in our city, that live in our cities, that have, you know, been to Iraq and, you know, different places, and a lot of them come home with PTSD, and, and I think we have to be mindful, as joyous as going out and blowing up fireworks is, we've got to be mindful of those folks and what it does to them on that particular night, and also our animals. I mean, I have dogs that just, I mean, that they can't take it, they just go crazy. And so, be mindful of the animals and, and their vets that are out there today that, that are suffering, especially during that time. So, just wanted to bring that up. Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Thank you. Anybody else?
I told you how to connect the dots on that, call when it's happening, right? So, that's what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the city council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. So, over the, since our last meeting, there were 51 incidents in the city, 145 unit responses, so that's up, up somewhat significantly. I'll get some more details for you, certainly offline, but one thing of note is that the falls, people with trips and falls, were up to 14 this month, which was significantly more than we normally see. So, I can do some more, some more research on that, but the increase wasn't on fires or traffic accidents, as alluded to by, by the captain there either, but certainly significant, significant increase in our incidents throughout the city over the last month, so we'll keep an eye on that as we go forward. As we've talked about, many things coming out, I think, for the city on our social media campaign this month, a lot of those dealing with drownings, beach, and then waters, kind of around water safety, basically, and certainly don't want to forget that, it's very important. So, again, I know I say it every month, but ocfa.org/drowningprevention, there's a lot of really cool videos, very short videos, for those that are like me with short attention spans, easy to watch, there's four or five of them there. So, I just encourage all the residents to go and take a look at those and certainly take the water safely, or water safety seriously. Can't encourage enough, we mentioned it once a couple of months ago, water watcher tags. We have them available, we can get them to the resident, certainly, but just to designate someone as that water watcher and they don't have anything else to do while they're people in the water, so their sole purpose is to watch them and then hand the tag off. I'll go into fireworks now, because that's what I wanted, I know last month, I mentioned that I'd wait till this month. We're a week out, a week from today, we get to celebrate the freedoms that we have here in this, this awesome country that we live in. We've been talking about it, certainly, we'll have, there's three firework booths in the city here that Engine 23 will be going to do inspections on at the end of the week with our. with our Community Risk Reduction Department. So they'll be, they'll be checking out those to make sure that they're safe, actually just to sell them. One thing I wanted to tag on, and I think Captain Mattel had mentioned it, it's, so it's all safe and sane. That's the only thing that's allowed, but it's unmodified, safe and sane. You know, I know there, a lot of times, it's, seems like a large majority of the injuries we go on are for when, when fireworks are getting modified, to change those up. And so I just encourage everybody to use them as they were designed to be used. Well, Engine 23 will be about, be out patrolling the streets. We've got, we are upstaffed in our dispatch as well to monitor our wildfire cameras that are out in the wildland, wildland urban interface to look for any fires that might start. And then certainly, I know we touched on it a little bit on the crime side, and I don't wanna go into that, but we just had a fire in San Juan Capistrano a few days ago that was starting. There was four 13-year-olds that ended up getting a visit from law enforcement down there and they got enrolled in our juvenile fire center program. And so that's typically, if there's a fire started like that with a minor, at least on our end, we enroll them in that program going forward. So they're definitely out there. Everybody, you're starting to hear them at night. So we just, again, just abide by the rules and, and we just recommend, you know, we want everybody to have a great holiday and enjoy. That's the end of my report and ready for any questions if you have any.
Comments, questions? Okay, Councilman Wu, any comments, questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will review comments from members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will be reviewing public comments on each agenda item as they come up. Steve, is there anyone that is present or wrote in from the public that would like to comment?
We have a number of specific items, but for general public comments, we only have Pat Buttrish.
Okay. Hi, Pat.
Hi again. This little microphone gets a lot of work. I just wanted to come up and let you know that we finally, and I, I did send one to each of you, an attachment, that we're going to have an opioid, fentanyl town hall meeting, July 20th. It's a Thursday, out at Santiago Canyon College. We've got two parking lots that you can park in. And they're gonna address all these things that I think would have questions. Our sponsors, meaning people that are going to be kind enough to share this flyer with as many people as we can, is of course the Orange County Healthcare Villa Park, which we thank you very much that you'll put that out and let people know. The City of Orange, the Orange Fire Department. Because we're going to be talking to both Orange Park Acres, which has both the city and the county. And so we will have both city and county at this one, especially for the panel discussion. So that people who have questions and may live in the county would rather hear from these gentlemen than they would from Orange or, Orange Fire or Police Department. Anyway, it's gonna be, again, Thursday, July 20th. It's at Santiago Canyon College, Building E, Room 203. And it's from 6:30 to 8:00. And anybody who comes and stays will get, I can only say Narcan. I can't say this other word. Thank you. See? They know. Anyhow, they get that to go home with and there'll be at least a 15-minute training session on how to use it. So I think it's a lot that we are offering. And I know Councilmember Miles is going to have another one because this is happening in summer. We may miss parents. We have Orange Unified School District helping us get the word out. But we know people are on vacation. And, and bless her heart, she decided to go ahead and do one too in September, which should be when the parents are back and we'll be able to capture that. And I'll be working with her from Supervisor Wagner's staff to help her with that. So thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else, Steve?
No.
Okay, now we'll move into our agendaized public hearing. Our first hearing is to waive the reading of full, in full, of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I'll now open the hearing. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you. This is our monthly item that we do to expedite the meetings. We'd recommend approval and staff available to answer any questions.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
We will be doing a verbal vote because we have a member on Zoom. So we'll have to do a verbal vote by law at this time, so. I will go ahead and start calling Councilwoman Miles.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Wu.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Rosini.
Yes.
Mayor Pitts.
Yes.
Pass is 5-0.
Our next hearing is a consideration of the fiscal year 2023-24 operating budget and seven-year capital improvement program appropriating revenue and establishing the appropriations limit for fiscal year 23-24 and amending the salaries and benefits resolution. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you, Mayor. We're very pleased to have the opportunity to present our budget. City staff have worked long and hard in pulling this together, starting as far back as January. The 23-24 fiscal year budget will start July 1st. To begin with, I want us to reassure everybody the city is in a very good position. We are in, we have a very strong financial position. We have a reserve that equals 50% of our general operating fund, which is an excellent position based on the government finance officers association. So with that in mind, we have a budget with revenues of 5.8 million, expenditures of 7.5 million. And people say, "Why is that different?" It's because we use fund balance carryforward from prior year to balance it all out. Capital projects will be about $2.4 million. And then we'll have an, we have an undesignated reserve, about $2.4 million for 2034, which again, is an outstanding level of balance based on prudent measures taken by the city council. We conducted public hearings in April and May and basically incorporated any directions we received at that time. We have received no real input from the public, but several questions we've been able to answer. Unique to this year is our budget is not necessarily printed. We're trying to save some costs. It's all digitally available on our website and we'll make it available. It's not interactive where they can't change it, but they can certainly go and review it. And we would encourage them to do so. If someone would be interested in looking at a hard copy, we'll have them at, available in City Hall. But we're limiting our numbers of actual hard copies to less than 20. And that saves us a lot of money and, you know, it's actually probably more convenient and, and useful to be able to sit at home and look through it and, you know, call and ask questions or whatever. Again, we're very proud of where we are. The actions you'll be taking are adopting a resolution which would adopt our budget and set the appropriations limit, which is required by law. It's under, sets a GAN limit about what our appropriations can be. And then our salary resolution, which basically defines our salary ranges. So we adopt that every year. So that is, is in there. I think that the council has been very prudent and smart. Our priorities are capital projects and public safety, so our infrastructure. For those concerned, we have sufficient monies to fully accommodate our capital project, which we've already started. People in the streets are already seeing some disruption in, in the work being done, but we're trying to do that in the off-school hours in the hopes it'll be done by the time school starts. So that, that will be paid for and then we'll be starting the next venture. But staff are available to answer any questions. I'm very proud of the efforts of, of our finance director, Lee and Alyssa. And actually, they all contributed. Charisse, Ashley, it's been a very good cooperative effort. It's over 150-page document with a lot of detail. And we can prepare to talk for hours if someone wants to call us and talk about it. So we'd encourage it. It actually makes you feel good when they call and ask questions. So anyway, we're, we're available, but we would, we're pleased to recommend approval.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Council, councilmen members, do y'all have any comments, questions?
I do. I just wanna say thank you to staff. I work with budgets, so I totally get, not this large. I totally get it and really appreciate all the time and energy and dedication that you've put into this and, and the outstanding work that you did, so thank you.
Anybody else? Councilman Wu, any comments?
Okay. Yes, I'd like to echo and thank you, Lee and, and the entire team. You know, we had two budget review sessions. Hopefully, the folks in Villa Park got an opportunity to hear all the different initiatives and things that we were planning to do and so forth and so on. I'm very pleased with it and thank you, sir, for your leadership throughout this whole process. It's been really good. Do we have any comments from the public?
No, no comments were submitted or nobody signed anything.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Is there emotional in this matter?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second.
Okay, we'll go the oral vote. Councilwoman Miles.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Wu.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Rosini.
Yes.
Mayor Pitts.
Yes.
Pass is 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next hearing is the adoption of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. I'll now open the hearing. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you. This was heard last month in the first reading of it. This is a accessory dwelling unit, as you're aware, the state changed some laws in the last couple of years. And our ordinances had not been changed at the time. We have since updated them to be consistent with state laws. We are certainly happy to elaborate on any questions you may have, but it is exactly the same ordinance that was presented in our May 27th, I believe, May 27th hearing. The way it would work is if the council adopts this, it will go into effect in 30 days. It will again be on our website. We do get questions. This allows, you know, defines the parameters, et cetera. And it's very consistent with state law. So some things, people may say, "Well, why didn't you do this?" There are limitations with state law as well. So we are being consistent with what we're allowed to do. And I thank Ray and Justin for their efforts here because I think it puts us in line with where we're supposed to be. And what will happen next is we submit it to HCD. HCD will then have to, you know, take a look at it and bless it. But I think since it's consistent with state law, I don't anticipate any comments or concerns.
Okay. Council members, any comments? Yes?
Yes, I would just like to thank city staff for where you did have discretion, that you exercised it, particularly the section on processing and plan check fees, that you're offering fees to be waived if there's a voluntary owner occupancy covenant is recorded or if parking spaces demolished or converted are voluntarily replaced. And I really appreciate you offering that sort of incentive, so thank you for that.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Did we, did we get any comments or anything from the public?
No, sir.
Okay. So I'll close the hearing. Is there a motion on the matter?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Okay, Councilwoman Miles.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Wu.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Rosini.
Yes.
Mayor Pitts.
Yes.
Pass is 5-0.
Our next hearing is regarding conditional use permit 2023-01-10161 Lemon Street. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the report.
Can I jump in? I need to recuse myself as I am within the sphere of influence. However, I do want to have public comment, so I'm gonna stay in the gallery.
Yes, I also need to recuse myself.
So with that, it would require, to pass it would require affirmative action, affirmative vote of all three of you.
Okay.
So in order to be approved.
Understood.
So I will, with that, I'll ask.
Please, please give us the report.
Justin, you wanna go ahead? We do have a public speaker. When?
Yes, good evening. Before you, it's conditional use permit 2023-01. And the application involves 10161 Lemon Street. The subject property is located in the E4 small estate zone and is currently improved with a single-family dwelling, a detached two-car garage and a detached three-car garage and ADU at the rear of the property. The property owner is planning on demolishing the current single-family dwelling and detached garage for the construction of a new 4,400 square foot, single-family dwelling. And the applicant and property owner is Mr. Ron Farnum. The focus of the application is the new attached two-car garage. Per city code, properties with five or more garage spaces must get a CUP. And this property will have five garage spaces, including an RV garage at the rear. Please know that the applicant previously submitted the rear, permitted the rear structure through the city and it did receive a variance and conditional use permit when it was built. The applicant justifies the CUP application because the extra garage spaces will provide a more attractive street frontage without having to park the vehicles on the driveway. The new garage would also provide additional protected parking for the owner's vehicles. Please know that the new garage and future single-family dwelling will comply with all other development standards, including but not limited to lock coverage setbacks and height restrictions. Pursuant to the zoning code, public ordinances were mailed and posted at least 10 calendar days prior to this public hearing. And the public hearing notice was also published in a local newspaper. To date, city staff have received 15 letters of support for the CUP and no letters of opposition. After close examination of the application, we are recommending approval. We do find that it fits in with the land use designation for the neighborhood and the E4 zone. I'll be happy to answer questions or concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Council members, any questions?
I have no questions.
We have one public speaker as well.
Councilman Wu, any questions, comments?
I would like to hear the public speaker.
Okay.
So the speaker is Ron Farnum. I believe he's the applicant.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Ron Farnum. I live at 10161 Lemon Street. My wife and I are building a new home. We have cars, motorhome. And the new home adds a two-car garage in front. And basically, the, the back garage, it could, most people don't even know it's our property. It's 250 feet. It's actually 300 feet to the back, but 250 feet from the front of the property. And most of it's blocked. We have, I have a motor coach, a tow car, a hot rod, very proud of, and our two cars, and actually a space for our ADU, a parking space. So we can have the security of a garage for all of those. And plus the aesthetics of the city and stuff. I think it looks nice that you're showing off your house, not your cars. And like Justin said, we walked around all the local neighborhood and got, we took letters that asked them if they supported it and if they'd sign that. And it was great for us because we've lived there almost 12 years and we barely knew the neighbors around the corner on a different street. So we, we met all the neighbors. Two of them were council people. All of them were very positive about it. Obviously, the council people had to, even though they supported it, they can't vote on it. And so we didn't have anybody around us or any notice to the city that I've heard of that, you know, denied it, so to speak. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. And I wanna thank you for accepting my CPU, especially the city personnel. Justin and everybody's very helpful in administration for me, walking me through all this process. And one other, as a retired firefighter, I'd like to thank the service of the chief and the captain over there.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you working so closely with the city to get this done. And we wish you all the luck in the world.
Thank you.
Comments?
I just wanna commend you on doing it the right way, by gaining your neighbor's support, by thinking of others before self, at the same time, still trying to improve your property.
And like I say, it was very beneficial to us. Just, we've made some new friends that will be going and seeing that we, you know, not just the ones right next to us and stuff, so.
Well done. Got my support.
Thank you.
Can you sit down or you wanna?
No, you can sit. You can, you can sit.
I mean, I don't, I just.
You're good. Steve, any, any other comments?
No, no other things.
Comments?
Evening, council. I am the Crystal Miles, 18511 Santiago Boulevard. As the most impacted neighbor here, cause we share a common wall, fully support what the Farnums want to do. They moved in about 12 years ago, and we knew 12 years ago, I think, was always the intent that they were going to demolish and rebuild. I think the only thing that changed was the second story to single story, based on the amount of time. But the CUP, you really can't see the other two garages. It's so tasteful and so well-done in the back of the existing ones with the ADU that you'll never be able to see it. So you can stand in any angle of the property, and it'll still only look like they have the two garages. So really, I hope you guys approve it. Like I said, this is something they've been in the works with for a long time. They did everything right. They didn't start it before. They walked around, you know, followed the policy, and couldn't be happier for them because I know this has been a long time coming. So, fully support. Kirk and I vote.
Thank you. Anyone else, Steve?
No, sir.
Okay. Close the public hearing?
I'll be happy to move, I'll be happy to move the item and the recommendation of staff.
Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Pass this 3-0 with two accusations.
Our next hearing is regarding variance number 2023-05-19171 Mesa Drive. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for an extension. You'll recall this item was heard originally in March 28th, where the council voted 3 to 2 to deny the variance 203, 2023-05. They were directed to revise the findings of the resolution presented that time to reflect a denial. Came back in April 25th. City council present, the city staff presented the revised findings and a resolute draft resolution at the time, following a discussion the council directed on a vote of 3 to 2 to continue the variance to the regularly scheduled meeting of June 27th. Originally, it was one month, but they, the applicant asked for two months to provide Mr. Bowie, the applicant, additional time to meet with the residents. On May 25th, we met with, the city staff met with the applicant, who explained that the principal architect, the project was ill and delayed the progress on the project. They requested a continuance till the regularly scheduled August 22nd meeting. On June 14th, staff was contacted by, again, by the applicant, who provided a brief update. He met with some of the surrounding residents to discuss revised plans. We have received a additional set of revised plans late last week. That would still require a variance at this time. So Mr. Bowie has asked that we would continue the item until August of this month, this year, I'm sorry, August 22nd. So that is what is up. The vote is not approval or denial of the variance, but the vote is to address the request for a continuance. And I, we have a number of speakers, and let me just go into, should the variance, the request for variance be continued, that in fact would, no action would be taken until August 22nd. Should the request for an extension be denied, the city council would revert back to the original decision, which was, the, the variance was denied on a 3 to 2 vote. We would then secondarily, in the meeting this evening, we have a draft resolution that would, that was originally presented back in April, that we would request the council, council take action on, that would formally deny the variance, should that be the case. So that's the two options of where we're going tonight, but it is not, at this point, a vote, the, the action that we're asking for is a, the request to continue the item until August 22nd. Since it was dated to a time certain, staff did not have the luxury of moving it. We are coming back per direction of the city council, and it has been noted, noticed publicly as a result. So with that, staff, Justin and Ray are available to question, to answer any questions, which I suspect there may be a few of them, and we have a number of speakers that have submitted forms.
Okay. Council members, you have any questions?
I just want to hear from the public.
I'd like to hear the public letters and ones that we received that maybe the rest of the public haven't heard.
Okay, so Justin, why don't you talk, talk through the letters?
Can I ask a question? Were the letters of opposition or, or for, was it about continuing or is it about denying the variance? Because tonight, we're talking about continuance of this item till the next, till the August meeting.
I believe, and Justin can verify that, they're all addressing the request for the
Because the reason I say that is because I think we heard from a lot of these same folks the last time about their opposition to the, to the variance.
Justin, is that correct, that I believe they all are addressing the variance as opposed to the continuance?
Yes, that's correct.
Except for one.
Mayor, can, can we hear from them? If they choose not to speak, and I understand your point, and we need to get through the meeting, but let's give them the opportunity. If they want to speak, let's let them speak.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to deny people their voice in the matter. I'm just trying to set the, the expectation that we're voting on continuation and not voting on the variance denial or whatever tonight. That's not our intent.
Mayor, I believe that the letter from Donna Buxton addressed the continuance.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Justin, you have letters you'd like to read?
Um, I'll have to see if I have Donna's. I don't think I have that one.
That was received this half, this morning, I believe.
Okay.
Yes.
And I have not received, I don't have that copy.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it. Why don't you just read the others? Justin, I think, for the record, why don't you read the others?
Yes, I can read some of the other letters if you would like, or-
And we'll get the one from Donna as well, so.
So.
Now, are the, the letters, any of the folks that are here tonight?
We do have Donna's, actually.
I, if the people are here, why don't you just say who they're from? If they're here, they can choose to speak as well.
Yeah, let's go, let's go with the speakers first and then, then come back to the letters that are not, for the folks that aren't here.
Perfect.
Okay, that's, so we're going to the speakers first?
Please.
Okay. Alisa, I can't read. Okay.
And please keep, please keep in mind, folks, there's a five-minute time limit, so do your best. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much, city council members and mayor. Appreciate your time. My name is Alisa Getzko. My parents are Sang and Yan Bang. You don't have the map up today, but they are the one in red from the last map that I saw from the meeting, which is that they are the most affected by these variance requests. So they live at 9481 Villa Isle Drive. So really, there are three things. Number one, we would respectfully ask that you deny the continuance, as well as the variance, to be clear, but we respectfully ask that you deny the, the continuance for the reason that the time allotted to the applicant was meant to work with homeowners, neighbors, new friends, as the previous agenda item applicant had commented. The problem is, is that this person has not done that, and so those considerations with potential new friends and new neighbors has not been considered. For that reason, deadlines are meant to be met, not to be continued. When I went to school and my professional career, I meet deadlines. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, but I meet deadlines, right? And so that's why they're there. 60 days is ample time. So we would respectfully ask that you deny the continuance. The applicant has had plenty of time. In addition to that, now this is reported information that we've received just amongst our new friends and neighbors, is that the applicant has given different information than what was submitted to you all. So the applicant submitted information that stated that there were no variances and that they had no inclination to talk to any of the neighbors. So that's disappointing and frustrating on many levels. So, you know, with that, I mean, we, if you, if this gets continued back in, to August, not only do we all have to come in and spend our time, our money, our resources, our tax dollars, to allow this applicant who has not presented in good faith. So based on those reasons, we respectfully ask that you deny the continuance, as well as, for future reference, deny the continuance. I mean, deny the variances as well. So, thank you. They knew, they knew what they were getting into, bottom line. They are not working with neighbors. There's no good faith, and we just don't think that they deserve the extension. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Akshay Anan. Hope I got that right.
Evening, sir.
Oh, friends. Congratulations, Mr. Farnum, on working with your neighbors. I just wanted to get that out there. What a novel concept. So, yeah, you can probably tell where I stand on this whole thing. I'm at 19181 Mesa Drive, the home that's above, above where the vacant lot is right now. So, and I made comments last time, so I just kind of wanted to give council and staff an update on what's transpired since then. So a few weeks ago, the architects did swing by my house at 8 o'clock and wake up my kid and get my dogs barking, but that's neither here nor there. And they gave me a copy of the proposed plans, which I have at my house. I'm happy to show them. I think I talked to someone at city staff, and they were similar plans. They told me and one other neighbor who they met with, there are no variances, we're good to go, and I'm like, great, we found something that you're going to build, no variances. City staff tells me a week later, there are variances. So I'm like, okay, this means one of two things. Either they're straight up lying to the community now because they don't want us to show up here, or whatever the reasons are, or they fundamentally don't understand variances, and I'm not sure that's any better, because they're architects. Sorry, just being candid. I asked, you know, how come the owner hasn't met with us? They have, the owner, or the architects have my phone number, they have my email, they know where we all live. I was told, and this is not verbatim, that the owner is a very important and successful businessman and doesn't have time to deal with matters like this, because he runs a business in China. Okay, that's fine. We're not important, no big deal. Interesting comments. So there's also been inconsistencies on who will live there. I know we're not in the process, it's not our job to vet who lives somewhere, but now we've been told three separate things since April, that A, they're going to flip the house. I have marketing material from them the first time they talked to me. Then I was told that the owner is going to live there. Then another neighbor was told two families are going to live there. So there's inconsistencies all over the place. The last thing I'll mention is, I really appreciated what Councilman Rosini asked them last time, I think in April, May, whatever it was, which is, you all know this is probably the weirdest lot in Villa Park. Like, it is. There's a reason it's been vacant. The foundation sucks. Like, when I bought my place, I could put a ball on my living room and it would sit there. Now it slowly rolls when my toddler places a ball. Like, there's, we know that it's an odd lot. It hasn't changed. So Councilman Rosini respectfully asked, like, maybe do some due diligence with the foundation. You know, there's Ingris Egris questions, there's traffic questions. Like, you guys know Mesa is a main artery that's going to shut down the street essentially with all the traffic stuff. I asked random questions like that. There were no answers. There's, there's no, I don't feel that there's been due diligence done. If I was building on that lot, I would want to talk to my neighbors, I would want to get my ducks in a row with all kind of the oddness and the funkiness of that lot. And I get that, that anyone has a right to build there, but it's just like, man, the credibility has been shot, and after that conversation that they had with me a few weeks ago, I was like, what are we doing here? Like, they're not going to meet with us. Like, we've given them 60 days. We want to give them another 60 days. Like, if, if they conveyed to me that we're not important enough for the owner to even send me an email, like, you're overseas, fine, you run a business, fine, send me an email, tell me your side. Like, that's why I appreciate things like that we just heard, like, talk to your neighbors. We're a community. We're not like, we're not Hollywood Hills or whatever. So it's just really disheartening to see that, and, and I guess my message to you all as the city is, sometimes weird circumstances require actions outside the norm. This is not a normal lot. These are not a normal set of circumstances. So I would ask the city to really look out for the community at large and not one developer who's trying to make a buck or whatever he's doing, because that's, that's, that's how I see it. I know I'm biased, but that's just, that's really how it feels. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our, our next speaker is Habat Badeh? Did I mispronounce that? Sorry.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. Well, I live at 19161 Mesa Drive, and this is 19171 Mesa Drive. There's a property which is 19181, which is, he lives in it, in between us. The only difference is that I have a driveway that I'm giving easement to them, to 19181 Mesa Drive, and there is another driveway which is not built right next to it, which is supposed to be access to 19171 Mesa Drive. Over the last four, five years, every time the grass grow, they come to my property, go into their property in order to cut the grass, and they're using my property. They don't use their own property because it's not accessible. Now, they're going to come and build a property in there, and they're going to use my property, then we're going to be in a fight, in a court, in a things, dispute with that, that they're not giving me any plan. Okay, you're going to put, move the light pole. You're going to move the light pole, you're going to get him out of electricity. How long is it going to take? Start explaining that. How are you going to move the electrical pole, which is serving another building? And what is going to be the remedy on that? How long is it going to take? How long they're going to be without power? I'm not trying to, you know, argue for them. They can defend for themselves, but what I'm trying to say that, this property has been sitting in there, and they're going to build it, no variance, period. It shouldn't be denied. It shouldn't be denied that they didn't comply with their 60 days, they didn't take advantage of it, and then they used us and the city, and they submitted a plan under 11 hours, which is not meeting the requirements that they promised to give, and you're going to give them another bonus and give them another 60 days because they didn't comply? What kind of sense is that? I, I wish I could get those kind of things when I come to here. That's not the process. We are all being, fighting, wasting our time, coming here to the text, to the email, to the all kind of communication. Why? Because somebody is not even willing to show up in here and tell us exactly what he's planning to do, and he's enjoying himself in China. I don't buy that. We are living in here, and we're going to enjoy our neighbor, and now we realize how many good friends we have around us. Do you think he's going to be friend with us, or are you going to sell it to somebody else? We don't know that either, and I don't really care. That's his property, he can do whatever he wants. But no, he's not going to have variance. He can do whatever he wants with his land, as long it is within the law and the coordinate ordinance and the variance of the city that it has approved and giving every single one of us a guideline to follow. If I want to build a building, I will follow by the code. I've been doing this for the last 50 years. I'm general contractor, I'm engineer, my wife is an architect. We never deal with this kind of things with another architect before. We have to follow the law and the rules, and that's my standing, and I hope that everybody agree, and all of you agree to shut down these things forever. And if he wants to come and fill out another application, let him fill out another application six months from now, or a year from now, with the proper code and regulation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going, okay, here we go. We're almost back up. We, we just wanted to hold for a second. There we go. We're good? Okay, then we go ahead.
Councilman Wu, can you hear us? Okay.
Uh, our next speaker is Tim Doring.
Evening, sir. Good evening, hi. My name's Tim Doring. I, I live at 9471 Villa Isle Drive, next door to the red property of my neighbor here. I came here last time, and I'm glad I did, because I was, how do you say it? Never been to a council meeting before, and I'm glad I went because a lot, I took a lot of things from that. There was, some of it was concerning, but the main thing is, the one thing I came concerned the most was just looking at this project, and it was one vote away from being passed. A project that I just think that didn't make any sense whatsoever. That's my concern as a citizen, and a lot of the neighbors have said the same thing. And so I just got a few comments here. First off, I went to Villa Park High School. My seven brother, brothers have, five brothers and two sisters all went there and took a drafting class there. And one of our instructors was G L Lewis. Anybody know who G L Lewis is? He's got it built Villa Park.
Exactly.
So we're stuck with a pretty bunch of houses, you know? And I asked him, why no sidewalks, no, no stop signs, why, you know, there's not, what have been a traffic light at the time when I went to high school? Because you wanted the Mayberry effect with Alan, or that Griffith show, right, right? He didn't want neighbors on top of neighbors, basically. And that's what, the compelling thing about Villa Park, that's what's called a hidden jewel. And so that's what most of us bought our properties here, and we voted you guys in to protect that. So, you know, the thing is with this concerning thing about last meeting, and I, I'm not going to point to anybody or anybody, but the concerning thing was, was more concerned about the investor, the time and energy he spent, and the money he spent. and the money he spent. But there was nothing mentioned about the homeowners, how much money they spent. They spent, there's people in here that spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on their properties, over a million, to build it back up, get that Brady Bunch look and get the nice designs and nice driveways and nice garages and all that kind of stuff, it builds up property value. But we all did it within the constraints, so the variances involved to get it done, right? So, it's not that, um, I seem a little bit nervous, like the lady before that. But, um, you know, it's, the variances is like, when I pitched in high school, the coach said, hit the outside corner, the black part, the white, the, not the, not the plate itself, just the black part, the tape, they call it. If you get a strike, stay there all day long. Third inning, go one ball out. If you get a strike on that, stay there. That's called widening the strike zone. Fifth inning says, go two balls out, you might get lucky. If you're there, stay there, you get the game won. That's widening the strike zone. And so now you have variances here that it seems like, they obviously didn't get their way last time, so they're gonna pull back. Now they got three people in my driveway, I didn't understand it cuz I all spoke Chinese, saying, no variances, he's, he's not a, he's a single man, but now he's bringing two families in. Two families, not one, but two, that's good. And he was, he's anxious to meet us. But it wasn't the guy, it was three guys, I don't know what their, I guess they represent the architect. But now all of a sudden you find out later, at the last second, there's variances again. So that's called widening the strike zone. And with you guys being the council, the power that you guys have, that last project was one vote away, one vote away, and what do you mean be here? So, you know, you start widening the strike zone, and projects like this pass, then other investors are gonna come in here, guess what? Villa Park, you can widen the strike zone, you're only one vote away from getting something done. And that's kind of a dangerous thing, cuz now you're gonna be neighbors on top of neighbors, basically. You're gonna be like Hollywood Hills, you know, ever been to Hollywood Hills? You drive through and you see, how the hell they built that house, you know, on top of that neighbor. But the one thing that G L Lewis, the reason why he built it the way it was, because he didn't want neighbors on top of neighbors. And, uh, you know, I think that, the main thing that comes out of this thing is that it's, the three guys that came to my house two weeks ago, no variances, two families, and the story changes. And then you find out from other neighbors, there's variances now. And so, I, I hereby request that it should be denied on the continuance and denied on the variances, period, these guys are playing games with this. You don't wanna vet, cuz the, last time I was here, we were told, you couldn't vet the investor cuz that would be insulting to the investor. At the same time, it's insulting to us because you should invest, vet the investor. Find out what his real true ambition is. Last time it was a single man with a 68 master bedroom suite, no yard, no nothing. Who's gonna buy that if he flips it? And, and the first thing that came to my mind, I didn't mention it last time, but that has a drug rehab center written all over it. Is that his intention? How do we know? I'm allowed to speculate cuz nobody vetted the guy. And so, you gotta start asking questions like that, because if you don't, there are other investors gonna come in here, and they're gonna be one vote away. And that's scary, as in, as a, people out here, we were, the first thing that most of the neighbors got with is that they're more concerned about the investor than us neighbors. And that's how we felt when we left. I know, I got five minutes, but I just wanna make that point perfectly clear, that's all. And so, um, and it came to my also attention recently that perhaps some of the councilmen were calling up on behalf of investors, saying where everybody was, and trying to get a feel for it. And I think that's a little, you know, it's kinda concerning cuz I don't know what the guidelines are that are, but it just seems like this thing's being promoted and, and it's being denied, but then they come back and they come with something else, and it's really confusing, especially with the credibility of the investor. And I think you gotta take that into consideration. And I really appreciated it, behalf of all the neighbors here, the anxiety that's all involved.
Sir.
To just flat out denying the continuance.
Pardon?
We've gone almost six minutes, thank you.
I know, I talk a lot, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last submitted speaker is Vidor Bowie. I believe he's the applicant. And then, after he speaks, we can go back and look at all the letters that we received. If there's any duplication, we wouldn't address those, we'll just simply address the.
Good evening, sir.
Hi, the council member, and thank you for anyone that being here, for sparing your time to coming and, um, I'll listen to your feedback. And I'm sorry for your confusion about the variant. We a little bit didn't know that, um, that sideways that need the variant. And, um, I just wanna say that, um, the, the reason that I'm delaying the, the variant because my architect was sick for two weeks and it's uncontrolled that, um, element that I didn't know that the owner was out of country. And he not gonna be back until, I don't know, maybe in mid-August. And, um, during that time, we did try to modify the plan, and we shrinked out the house from 8,200, around 8,300 to 6,500 square feet, square footage. And, um, we trying to get rid, we get rid of the rooftop, as a lot of people not really like about it. And, um, we trying to increase the setback from the property line. And we gonna have more plans surrounding the, the property for, you know, privacy issues. And for, um, because we haven't answered the question about the construction and trash ways and how to do the story, because we need to get the planning approved first in order to get to that point, because it's gonna be, um, a lot of money. And to answer that, our budget to put on this project is around almost 3 million because the grading, we have to do the grading again, we have to do the soil again, and of course, we have professional team and engineer that are gonna taking care of it. I'm sorry. And, uh, I just wanna say that, um, we hear out the feedback from the city and from the neighbor, and we trying to work our best to, with the plan, to, you know, reduce all that, uh, problem about privacy issues and, you know, the, the variants. So, um, I'm here to sincerely request the extension for my variants, so we can have time to design, to fulfill like my owner dream homes and to hear out all the neighbor and the city. And I understand that the city can vote against my variants, and but, and the plan will be designed toward the building code and to maximize the fair square footage of the house, and we're gonna fulfill the ADU requirement too. Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Steve, anyone else?
Uh, no, what, Justin, why don't you read the letters of anybody who wasn't a speaker? Is that totally appropriate?
So, the letter that I got today, I'm sorry, I didn't receive it. This was from Donna Buxton, and she lives off of Dotson Way. And it states the following, "I am writing to you regarding variants 2023-05 affecting the property 19171 Mesa Drive. As you know, this variance was first presented and denied in March with tremendous community concern voiced about privacy and other issues. My concern is not about the specifics of the variance itself, but about the fact that the resolution was pulled from the April consent calendar for the purpose of reconsideration. Our council members and city staff have already spent valuable time evaluating this variance request, and I'm confident that the review was thorough. No new compelling information has been brought forward to justify reconsideration, and the council is sending a message to future applicants that there is no need to put your best foot forward in the variance process, because if you are unsuccessful, you can get a second bite at the apple. Allowing reconsideration of the variance undermines all your actions and sends a message that you are uncertain in your decision making. I urge you to stand by your decision in March to deny variants 2023-05. Thank you, Donna Buxton."
Okay, Justin, any other letters that, I think there were some speakers who, who submitted letters. I know at least one.
Yes, I think everybody else was here today, so I can still read those if you would like, though.
I, I think it's repetitive.
I think if we, they've spoken, we probably have accomplished by, yeah.
Okay, council members, any comments, questions?
I have one. So, I'm, uh, honestly, I'm disappointed that, um, we're back here. And I wanna say thank you to all the residents who again took their time to come down here. I say disappointed because back in March, this was brought up, there was a council decision. And the council decision, with thorough work from city staff, public comment, the council came to a decision. In April, the, the council collective, um, a majority decided to go ahead and revisit this issue. And although, for the record, as everyone knows, you know, I was against it, I was the minority. And so, during that council meeting in April, it, um, it was brought to the attention. I went back, as you know, most, you know, I'm, I'm a data person. So, what did I do? I went back and I, I watched that section of the video. And that section of the video, some of the reasons for the extension or the continuation was because the applicant was fairly new to this process. He normally only interacted with other city planning commissions, rarely came up to city councils, this was his first time. And when asked, uh, how much time he needed in order to, um, and I'm gonna quote this, be able to set up a future meeting to be able to work with the neighborhood to address the concerns, um, he replied that he needed two months. So, per the agreement that the council had with the applicant back in April, the agreement was two months. Now, I, I know for a fact that there was no fatal flaw on the part of the city staff. For some reason, the agreement wasn't met. So, I am completely not in favor of continuing this even further, considering that the applicant was given ample time. The bite at the apple is being taken again, it sets a terrible precedent. And I don't believe that the parameters that were agreed upon back in April were met. We heard from a whole bunch of residents that said that they weren't able to address the concerns, that they did not have that future meeting, and it appears that they have become more frustrated. I really appreciate all the comments that, that they came. I think that the council needs to make this right. I think the council needs to, to, um, deny the request for a continuation. I am not happy or satisfied with asking these residents to come back again two months from now. And the right thing to do would be to go back to what we originally agreed upon and the original agreement, which was to deny the variants and then recognize that the applicant did not fulfill his part of the agreement that was made with the majority of the council in April. Thank you.
Okay. Somebody else? Go ahead.
No, go ahead, please.
Yes, so, um, I have to agree. But I do stand behind this decision to grant the additional time. I felt and still feel that, um, working together among neighbors is always the best path, best path forward. However, I don't feel that the owner or the project manager in this case took advantage of the time extended to them. There were promises made about, you know, meetings and transparency that I don't feel happened. And I really don't feel that if given another 60 days, it will go any better than the, the last 60 days. So, that's my feeling.
I'd like to thank everybody for their, their comments, and I'm sorry that you had to come out here again and spend your very valuable time as a community to speak on this item that was previously resolved and, and should not be back on the agenda again, with all respect. I believe the applicant is unprofessional, I believe the applicant is disingenuous. I believe that, um, the owner is equally the same. And it's sad that he thinks so little of his neighbors and this community that he would try to build a project like that and not have the common sense, the common courtesy to meet with his neighbors and to be present, at least remotely. Yet he hasn't even tried to make that effort, that's pathetic. I am a hard no on this, thank you.
Councilman Wu?
Uh, thank you for the time. I appreciate all the neighbors, uh, came in today again to speak on their feelings and their interaction. Today, I feel is what the mayor, um, and also our city staff is mentioning, is more focusing on extension of the matter. The applicant has mentioned that the owner has been out of country. So, I would imagine, if I'm the owner, I should have the ultimate say how the plan should be. And being out of the country, that create gap, time zone, um, you know, conflict to try to move this project along. And also the applicant, Mr. Bowie mentioned, the architect has been sick for two weeks. Talking to our staff, even though it is 60 days extension, but in theory, or actually, technicality, they need to provide everything done within the first month in order to be presented in this meeting. In other words, they must have everything done, if I remember correctly, the first week of June, in order to allow the city to put out the proper notice to neighbors as such. And it sounds to me that the reason it was delayed is, as Mr. Bowie mentioned, the owner is not here, um, and the architect was sick. So I believe once the architect was back, and they did come back to contact the neighbors, we are here to figure out, what is, to me, I am here to try to figure out what is the best way to move forward, cuz this property is owned by some, someone, and that owner would like to build. Even today, we put the variants where we don't allow the continuation, even though the city staff proposed to agree to continue. You know, to August, in theory, is because we had canceled the July meeting last month. So that's why it's August, otherwise it would be July. And to me, if we deny it, we also deny the, the possibility of variants, which, again, I understand why, cuz if I lived there, I wouldn't want such a house so close to my property. But my biggest concern, I hope all the neighbors on Mesa and also Villa Isle would really understand this, if we deny it today for continuous, that means we denied variants. That also mean we are giving the ability for the owner to build an ADU that is four foot away the property line. That could be four foot away from Mesa property line or four foot away from the, uh, Villa Isle properties. So if the neighbors will be okay with that, then so, I, I, I don't know what I, I can say, because I personally would not like that. I prefer ADU and the main house more away from the, uh, property line. And I feel that's what we are trying to figure out, how much more can we push the owner to put it away from the property line by allowing this extension and give them the more time to really figure out. I understand the soil, I understand all this engineering, but all that, what Mayor Paul Tim Rosini mentioned last time, all this come after the plan is being approved by the city. So, you know, I hope I'm not making, uh, mistaken this American medium, why are we forcing a carriage in front of the horse right now? Right now, we should talk about how can we make this plan that is livable for everybody around there. The applicant had mentioned, they, they already decreased the property from 8,200 down to 6,500. That is 1755 square foot smaller than their intention. They already took out the roof line, I mean, I mean, sorry, roof, rooftop, and they have moving away from the property line, including the ADU. Maybe that is not good enough yet, and I, I would like to see more, but that is not my property. I hope the owner will listen to this video if he's being given the extension and will agree to do more away from the property line. And I think that's where really, if I would live in there, I would like to see that. I, my biggest fear is, today we deny the extension and allowing a denying variation, I mean, variants, then they will build a pop, an ADU by state law. It's only need to be four foot, four foot away from property line. So I would like to, I don't want to see that happen. So I would really ask neighbors to truly understand what we are, you are asking us to vote.
Okay. Sure.
Um, I would just like to add, um, in response to the criticism that, you know, this council has granted two other extensions other than this Mesa one, so that the property owners could consult with their neighbors, and it, it's resulted in success. You know, one of them was a unanimous vote, you know, where they got together with the neighbors and they found a plan that worked for everybody. And so, that's the hope, you know, is that we extend this time, we find a plan that works for everyone. But unfortunately, in this case, this homeowner did not take advantage of that time. So, he had the same opportunity as the two other variances that we granted the additional time, and he didn't take the advantage of the opportunity like the other two homeowners did.
Okay.
I just have a, oops, sorry.
Go ahead.
I think you kind of proved my point. I have no problem with an extension if somebody is sincere and genuine and trying to do the right thing. But when somebody's unprofessional, when somebody's dishonest with their neighbors, with staff, and doesn't show the common courtesy that all of us do to each other within this community, I don't think they, they, they deserve that. I don't think they had any intent on, in candidly doing what was asked of them.
I don't think they had any intent on, in candidly, doing what was asked of them. I'm very disappointed by that. And with respect to the comments about the carriage before the horse, that's the cart before the horse, but I appreciate that, I would just say that we're not. I think we're asking very legitimate questions of a very, very large project that is going to create a tremendous traffic issue, a tremendous building issue, a tremendous inconvenience, and potentially a diminution of value of multiple homes there. Because candidly, it looks like the applicant and the owner want to turn and burn on this. It looks like another out-of-town investor that wants to come here, has no buy-in in the community, and hey, build all you want within the code. You go outside of the code if you don't have a good reason for it, and I don't believe they do, candidly, I don't believe the community believes he does, then I'm sorry, you're not going to get my vote. And I would hope my colleagues would listen to the community. Listen to the community. Thank you.
I have a comment. So, and, you know, yes, is it always good to try and have people work together and foster that sense of community and maybe even compromise absolutely? However, I want to remind my colleagues that that March meeting, we had an overwhelming response, both in person with more seats filled and letters from people and phone calls and texts. So, there's a difference between if the council says, hey, you know what, we don't really think this is good, and then the community goes, well, we'll try and work together, and maybe we had some opposition and we had some that were for it. We've never had a letter of support that I'm aware of. Justin, have we ever had a letter of support, ever, for any of it? Okay? Other than a couple council members who want to support the continuation, I don't know anybody that is primarily affected by this that has said, yeah, I'm all good. Okay? So, I think we have exhausted staff time on this. I think we have exhausted our residents' time on this. And I, just for clarification, just because I want to make sure I heard this correctly because if I didn't, then that means somebody else did. But the ADU and the four-foot setback, that is a state mandated. The city has nothing we can do about that. We have no control over that. Now, whether there's a variance or not for this property or any other property, the only connection that an ADU has is it has to have a house with it. So, if this was granted and if the variance was granted, that ADU could be four feet, whether or not there's a variance. So, I just, it sounded like you said that if we didn't, and forgive me, I'm just, like I said, trying to get clarification, but it sounded like you referenced that if we, as a group, did not approve the continuation, that the applicant could then build an ADU four feet from the property line, and he can do that whether there's a variance or not. So, I just want to make sure that that's out there. So, if I misheard you, then I misheard you, but that's my comment.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close this.
Can I speak on that, please?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Miles, you are absolutely right. It is the state mandate. My point was in whether we approve the variance or not. He, either way, he had the ability and authority by the state to build so. What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to indicate is as the plan they had submitted, they put the ADU and the main house aligned, meaning they put both structure in one line away from the property line. I don't know what it is now, what Ray and Justin have received. I believe is 15 feet or 17 feet away from the property line as the new, the newest possible plan right now. My indication is more if we deny it for any variation, variance, then I am afraid the owner want to maximize this oddly shaped lot. This is the prime definition why an owner need to apply for variance because an oddly shaped lot. My fear is because we deny the extension, that also means deny variance, then they, the owner and the architect may look at us, okay, how can we maximize the usable flat land, but possibly by putting the ADU four foot away from the property line. As of today, they are putting it away from property line. That's more what I'm saying. I hope that, you know, make clear. I mean, you are right, Councilwoman, they can do it with or without variance for the ADU portion. But I feel right now the owner would like both structure to align at the same, you know, setback from the PL. So, that's more my concern. I don't want to see they go back to do what the state minimum require. I like how Villa Park is, and I would like to continue to keep that, and I just don't want to see that happen. And I believe the applicant had mentioned, if we deny it, then they will, they understand they have to go back to the drawing board and will fulfill the requirement by the city and the state for the main house and ADU. So, that's why I wanted to point that out, that I hope that makes sense to you.
It does, it does.
And I understand, Mayor Portem Rosini mentioned about car in front of horse. I understand what you mentioned. Those are very important element, I do, and I am also concerned for that. But what I'm trying to say is those elements really could not happen until the owner and the architect know exactly the plan, where we as a city allow them to build so they will do the soil sample on those area versus a soil sample on where to put a plant. But I understand your concern, I do. But that is not the topic we are talking about, continuous or the variance. So, that's why I'm saying, why are we putting a car in front of the horse?
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'm going to close this.
Call the question.
Go ahead.
Call the question. I'm calling the question, I'm calling the motion.
What would you like to do?
Make a motion.
I was closing the, closing the public hearing.
Yep, perfect.
Is there a motion on this matter? If I'm allowed.
So moved.
I would be happy to make a motion to deny the recommendation by staff and not grant an extension to the applicant. Is that crystal clear or clear as mud? Okay, that's what we're voting on.
So, what is on the motion? So, I, I.
The motion is to deny the continuance.
Okay.
I'm sorry. The motion is to deny the continuance. Subsequent to the vote, we'll have, ask, we will ask you to address the resolution that was originally presented in April, which would formally deny the variance, returning that to the vote that was taken in March. So, we would go back to where we were in March, denying the variance. So, by implication, by not continuing the, by not allowing the continuance today, you have, in effect, denied the variance, and we would ask a formal opinion, formal resolution adoption.
Yeah, so you'll have to have a second vote, pro or con, on the variance in the first place.
Oh, second. So, it's not better to just vote no because the recommendation is to grant?
The recommendation is just simply to grant the additional extension.
Yes, we'll grant the extension.
No, the motion was presented by Mayor Protem Rosini was to deny the recommendation to continue, to allow the continuance. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I think that's what.
And I'm seconding that.
And that's what was seconded, right? So, to vote yes would deny the continuance.
Okay.
Right?
Correct.
Right?
We have a motion second.
Voting no would mean continuing.
Would be, yeah, it would do, in effect, be voting to continue, to allow the continuance.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, I'm not very good with double negative. I just want to make sure.
Okay. Are we all straight? We good? Steve, call vote.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes, to deny.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Wu?
A no to extend.
Okay, that, that's yes to the motion?
Well.
Yes to the motion would be to deny the continuance. A no to the motion would be to, in effect, allow the continuance.
That is correct. So, it's no.
Okay, okay. Mayor Protem Rosini, yes.
Yes.
So, that passes by a four-to-one vote so that the continuance is denied. With, with that, I, we have the resolution. I would formally go back to the April vote. I'm going to have Dustin read it for the record. I have a councilor here, Dustin.
Thank you.
So, the findings in the resolution are based upon the statements that you've made at the prior hearings as to why variance is not warranted. And then for Councilman Wu, obviously, we can't physically hand it to him, but Justin's going to read it.
Folks, please be quiet, we're in session. If you want to comment or whatever, go outside or come to the podium. Thank you. Go ahead, Steve, I'm sorry.
So, Justin, do you want to go ahead and read the, for the record? Because we don't have a, when the councilman present, we need to probably read it for him.
Sure, would you like me to read the findings and facts?
That's, yes, the gist of it is the findings, yes.
Okay, so, before you use resolution 2023-3572 to deny variance 2023-05, the first finding is that the strict or literal interpretation and enforcement of the zoning regulation would not result in a practical difficulty or a necessary hardship inconsistent with the objectives of the zoning ordinance. Fact, that is a, that a strict or literal interpretation and enforcement of the zoning regulation would not result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary physical hardship inconsistent with the objectives of the zoning code. The subject property possesses over half an acre of square footage and yields a buildable pad large enough to construct a new home within the required setbacks. Additionally, the topography is flat enough to yield a building pad large enough for a new single-family dwelling without the need for retaining wall exceeding the 10-foot height requirement. Second, that there are no exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the property or the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone. Fact, the subject property has a large buildable area that faces similar topographic constraints as neighboring properties. The building constraints do not preclude the property owner from designing and constructing a smaller house within the required setbacks, nor does the 10-foot restraining, retaining wall height limitation preclude the potential construction of a new single-family dwelling and attached ADU. Three, that the literal, stricter literal interpretation and enforcement of the zoning of the regulation would not deprive the applicant of privileges enjoyed by the owners of other properties in the same zone. Fact, that a strict or literal interpretation and enforcement of the zoning code would not deprive the applicant of the ability to improve their property according to the development standards required for properties in the E4 zone. Absent the setback in retaining wall deviation, the property owners would still be able to construct a new single-family dwelling and attached ADU in a manner enjoyed by other properties in the same zone. Four, that the granting of the variance would constitute the granting of a special privilege. Fact, granting approval to deviate from the minimum required rear-yard building setback and maximum allowable retaining wall height would constitute the granting of a special privilege. The property possesses a large buildable pad with ample space for the construction of the new single-family dwelling and ADU. Additionally, the majority of the easements on the property sit towards the front of the property and thus don't affect the property's buildable area. And five, that the granting of the variance would be detrimental to the public health, safely, safety or welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. Fact, granting approval to deviate from the minimum required rear-yard setbacks and maximum allowable retaining wall height would have a negative effect on public health and safety. Due to the privacy concerns of nearby neighbors, the proposed single-family dwelling would create a negative impact on public health. Furthermore, the unstable soil condition would create a public safety concern and may not be able to support the construction of a new single-family dwelling. So, approving this would deny the variance, and I'll be happy to answer questions or concerns.
Yeah, and Mayor, and just so, if I may, people understand, a variance is a creature of state law, and you have to make certain findings. So, what Justin just read there are the five findings you have to make under state law and how this project doesn't meet those findings. So, if you heard something that said, you know, there is no special privilege, that's what the finding requires, and then the facts say, well, no, in this case, there is a special privilege. So, that's what those findings entail, and that's what we're required to do under the law, and that's based on all the testimony and comment from prior public hearings.
So, for, to be clear, adoption of this resolution formally takes action to deny the variance.
Okay.
So, in this case, yes means no.
Are there any comments from council? Questions?
I did not hear you, Todd. What was the, yes, and what was no?
So, this resolution is to deny the variance. So, if somebody makes a motion to approve this resolution, it is a motion to deny the variance.
So moved.
Are you clear?
Second.
Oh.
Okay, moved and second.
Are you okay, Councilman Wu? Are you clear?
I believe so. If I vote yes, it means deny. If I know more, if I vote no, it means approve variance.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yes, sir. You got it.
All right, Steve, call vote.
Because the previous one kind of caught me off guard. I, I don't know. I do apologize.
Okay. Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Councilman, I mean, Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
So, the resolution to deny has been approved unanimously, five oh.
Now, we will consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action list on the agenda. Any member of the city council or public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion on separate action. Councilmembers, are there any items from six to 14 that you would like to remove from the calendar?
No.
I hear none. Can we please vote?
Well, real quick, item number, just for the record, item number eight and number 10, we sent out some, some last-minute edits, additions to the minutes. So, number eight would be the council minutes of April 25th have a amendment, and so does item number 10, which the council minutes of May 23rd. Those are in the record, just for the record, when you vote. I want to make sure that's clear.
Okay, thank you. Can you call for vote?
You need a motion to approve the.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion second, please call and vote.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts. Okay, so, one to 14 are all approved at a five-zero vote.
Okay. Our first item, new business, the approval of the fee study update. Staff, please give the report.
Catch up here. Sorry.
We're going. Okay, the fee study update, you recall back in 2020, we did a request for proposal. We went out, at that time, we hired Barry Dunn, Mitchell, and Parker, Barry Dunn, in essence, for $19,800. They looked at all our fee structures. We subsequently approved that in March of 2021, and we have made our fees go into effect in July 1st of 2021. Subsequent to that, there have been a number of changes in state law regards to building, planning, and engineering departments, the reviews necessary, and those types of things. So, specifically, we went back to Barry Dunn because they're most familiar with their system, and asked them what would be, what would it take? Because we are right now spending, as you recall, we had to update our contract with NV5 for the engineering work, et cetera. So, we are asking them to see how that's impacted our rates. So, they came back to us and the bid was $15,340, which is, again, much less, about $5,000 or $4,000, four or $5,000 less than the original contract. However, it's only focused on those areas, engineering, planning, and building departments, and those are related to additional requirements and things that we have to do as part of the state laws now. So, we are asking that those be reviewed, and we, before anything would be happen, we would come back to the council with our findings and make recommendations thereto. So, with that, we'd recommend approval of the contract with Barry Dunn.
Okay. Councilmembers, any questions, comments? Councilman Wu, you okay? Okay. See, was anybody write in or?
No, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second, please call and roll.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes five zero, thank you.
Our next item of new business is a contract amendment for Brea IT for information technology services. Steve, give us the report.
Thank you. Uh, you, we've been contracting for several years with Brea IT. Uh, City of Brea IT provides our, our IT services. During the course of our discussions with them, they've asked for a CPI increase. So that increase increases to $32,000. Uh, we would recommend approval. And again, this, this is a consultant on, as, as on-call used contract. So they provide us additional services and things we need. We've all used them and, you know, those types of things, help lines, et cetera. So we'd recommend approval if we can answer any questions.
Uh, council members, any questions?
I have a question. Comparatively, is this a relatively fair increase?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, it's a, I wanna say about a?
Three percent?
Three percent?
Yeah.
Minimal three percent increase or so.
Thank you.
So we, we feel it's a, it's a very, very fair.
I'll move the.
And obviously, it would be much cheaper than having to have staff on, IT staff onboard.
For sure.
We moved to second, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Our next item of new business is adopting 2324 street project list for SB1 road maintenance and rehab account. Staff, give the report, please.
Thank you. Uh, this is the state law, SB1 requires us to adopt the project list that we are doing. We're using state money on. State money is reflected in how we're using it. It's exactly the same as been previously approved and it reflected in our budget. So this is the resolution that we're required to adopt every year and submit as part of the eligibility for SB1 funding. So we would recommend approval.
Okay, any comments, questions? Hearing done, is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Moved to second, Steve, we call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilwoman, uh, Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes five zero, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Steve, it's time for your report.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things I just wanna mention. You've seen work going on in the streets. We are working through, um, we're publishing lists in our feeder. So if people wanna see timeframes and things, they can look around on our website. There's two, it's a little bit of confusing. When they say concrete work, that's typically curb and gutter. Uh, and they'll say, well, why isn't certain streets listed that we thought were approved? Because that doesn't necessarily involve curb and gutter, it involves asphalt. So there's a street list and there's a curb and gutter list. They don't necessarily jive. So some streets, we have some drainage issues that we're dealing with that won't show up on the asphalt list, but will show up on the other list, et cetera. So anyway, I just wanted to make that clear. If anyone has any questions or concerns about the streets, uh, what's being done, please give us a call. We've already gone out and talked to some of the neighbors. And in answer to the most common question, if plumbing is pulled up as a result, it will be, you know, irrigation, it does get restored, uh, it, as part of the project. It's not left there in pipes and PVC lying around, uh, because that's the most common question I've had to personally field. But that's just for the record. Uh, but again, please call us, city engineer, myself, staff, we can answer any questions. Uh, the number, second thing I wanted to say, we have had, uh, you, you remember, we have a consultant contract that's helped us working on our housing element. Uh, we have had a discussion with them, looks very promising. Based on some discussions we had, there are three elements that are very minor in detail that we believe, uh, can be remedied with some additional verbiage, in which case this, this state HCD has indicated that they believe we would be in statutory compliance with state law. That's a caveat. That doesn't mean we have certification, it just means verbally, uh, and for, we'll take that for what is worth those in writing. It means that we're meeting the intent of the law. By law, we cannot, they cannot certify the element until we complete the zoning of it because this new state law kicked in. So our next effort, if we get the statutory compliance, with a letter saying that, which we believe we are close to receiving, we would then have to move forward on at least, it's about a six to eight month process, Ray? To do, yeah, to do a, um, it's probably gonna cost us a lot, to do zoning changes and, and general plan update. But it is a significant achievement because what this tells us is the content of our housing element is accepted by state HCD. It does, means we don't have to change anything to be in compliance and to get certification. It means we have to go through another step, um, and that's because statutorily, the, the state adopted a new set of laws that said if you didn't meet a certain set of timeframes, you have to go ahead and zone it. Not just say you're gonna do it, but you have to actually do it. So that's what we'll move into next and we'll update you when we formally receive a letter. Uh, but we are, we believe we've made substantial progress and I do wanna thank Ray and, uh, Ray and our consultants, one of which has actually had a kidney transplant during the whole process. So, um, Dave Barquist. Uh, so we've, we've been very fortunate, they've got, we've gotten a lot of progress and we move along. And I think from the council's perspective, they need to be able to tell the residents that we believe that the plan as submitted will be accepted by the state with the caveat that we need to take the next zoning step, okay? That's, that's a big accomplishment, I think that's something that we should be.
To you and the whole team.
Fantastic.
We're very pleased with that. You know, it, it remains to be seen to get that letter from HCD, there's always tricky, the, with the wording.
I talked to several mayors and they're all struggling with this whole process.
Right.
Some, some feel like they're that close and then others are, there's a wide gap.
Well, the city of Orange, right, our neighbor next door, has their plan turned down. So we are in, we are in a, a preferable situation, but at the same time, we wanna be cautious and not gloat too much because I think we still have some work to do.
Right.
So with that being said, I just wanted to report out there because people are asking. The other thing I would mention is that with the adoption of the budget, we'll be moving forward and people should beware because the motorcycle cop will still be on the streets. He issued 61 tickets last month. So I just wanna be cautious that people be careful out there and drive within the law. If you don't, if you drive within the law, you're not gonna have to worry about a ticket. But if you don't, he's out there and I've seen him all over. I've heard reports from various councilmen that he's all over, various intersections and whatnot. So I would caution that that remains in effect as part of the budget. So the council has continued that and the sheriff has done a very good job of enforcing. You know, just be careful out there and you don't have to worry.
That's right.
Right, I think that's the, the message there. Uh, and again, the last thing we do is that we are certifying, we're going out with our, the, the fire, um, with our fire, uh, partners to check on the fireworks stands. So fireworks have a prescribed date that they will go on sale. We will hear to law, make sure that that's all being done appropriately and we will continue monitoring so that people know that we're following the laws, including the sale and transactions associated with that. So again, uh, my caution would be is that they're illegal in the city of Villa Park, but we would ask that you only use those that are purchased in Villa Park because they're the safe and sane and others are not, you know, other illegal fireworks are not legal that just because we have fireworks stands here. So we've gone through that a little bit, but I would caution people to have any questions about usage or purchase or whatever, please call the city hall and we can clarify. So that's all I really have, but, uh, I think some good news and the council can be a little bit happier about the, wherever you're going at this point.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate you. Okay, now it's time for council member meeting attendance report, starting with?
Victor. So, uh, June 15th, Thursday, so, um, gosh, time's flying by. Uh, vector control met and, um, kind of the main message is, is that, and this was again, when we were having all the June gloom. So when I wrote this, this was relevant then, now we have nice sunny days. But, um, although we've enjoyed cooler weather this spring, all the water sources created by winter storms have created a marked increase in the mosquito abundance countywide in June when compared to the five-year average. So, um, the, the week of the, um, what is that, like the third through the 10th? The average, uh, abundance per trap night, which is how they measure it, of southern house mosquitoes, which, um, Culex cucifasciatus, which I can never say that, reached, um, nearly double last year's average for the same week. So, uh, trapping continues to expand across the county and the operation teams are inspecting and treating known breeding locations. And that information collected in those mosquito surveillance programs helps operational staff to determine where to focus the control efforts. Um, California Department of Public Health, uh, vector borne disease section has reported 15 West Nile virus positive mosquito pools and 16 dead birds across nine counties year to date. Additionally, the California Department of Public Health reported two positive mosquito pools for St. Louis encephalitis, but not within, um, Orange County. So, um, Orange County currently has no positive West Nile virus activity, including both human cases, mosquitoes or dead birds, that's for Orange County. However, statewide, there are 84 positive mosquito samples, 41 positive dead bird samples, but no human cases, which is really good. But, um, St. Louis encephalitis virus, there's no activity in Orange County. However, statewide, um, there are four counties that have eight positive mosquito samples for St. Louis encephalitis, that's Imperial, Kern, Fresno and Riverside. So that's, Riverside's a little close, but. Uh, the Orange County data covers up to June 8th, um, the disease surveillance spring season. During disease, week of, week 20 to week 23, which is May 15th to June 8th, district personnel set a total of 454 traps. Of the traps set, the urban routine traps averaged 73 per trap night. Comparatively, last year's average this time was 52. So we definitely are seeing that increase. And then during disease, week 20 to week 23, the lab tested 713 mosquito samples. For flea borne typhus, the Orange County Healthcare Agency reported two additional cases of flea borne typhus since last month in the cities of Anaheim and Westminster. So this brings the total to three cases year to date. Additionally, there was a flea sample that tested positive for rickets. So, and that was from Anaheim and that was in May. And the operations, so I don't know if you guys remember, but I talked about, um, we have the, well, he's been there probably for a year and a half now, but the new operations director, he came from Disneyland, he used to control all the rodent population there. And he has done fabulous things for the district. So Vector's, um, district schools program, I had mentioned that they were going around and, um, um, surveying all the public schools within, uh, Orange County to see if there was, um, breeding sources. So the schools program was started in the beginning of '23 and staff was able to inspect all public schools in Orange County to identify potential mosquito breeding sources. Thirty-one percent of those schools were found to have breeding sources and treated or mitigated. However, here in Villa Park, none of our schools were found to have any of the, um, breeding sources, which is really good. And then I think, uh, they're gonna start doing private schools shortly too and, and that'll alternate, um, public schools one year, private schools next. And then lastly, there's a, a video that, um, we're gonna put on the feeder. It's called Just One Bite and it's, um, it's actually, um, very impactful. It's a six-minute long video, I recommend everybody watch it. It's not a feel-good video. It's, um, e- even if we hadn't gone as late as we had, I would not recommend watching it here. I think that, um, people need to watch it. It's Just One Bite, it chronicles, uh, three separate individuals who, um, who contract West Nile virus from a mosquito bite and their life, their daily struggles, um, and, and the fatality of it. So it really showcases and demonstrates, um, the importance of the mosquito surveillance and that tip toss, take action. So, you know, when, when I, when we sit up here and we talk about, and if you have little pots or whatever, tip toss, take action, it's only a bottle cap, it's really serious. And after you watch this video, um, it, it, you'll really look at mosquitoes a different way. So that's it.
I have firsthand experience with a family member that's.
It's horrible.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so don't watch this with, be prepared to not, not like it.
Thank you. Sanitation District, uh, I attended the board meeting on May 26th and the admin committee meeting on June 14th. Thank you, gentlemen. Board action was we re-elected chairman Chad Vanke from the city of Placentia and vice chair Ryan Gallagher from the city of Tustin to the board for a two-year term. Uh, we did receive budget updates from the finance team. We're in the process of updating the strategic plan and budget, which will be done in September. And by the way, I'm happy to share, if anyone's interested in, in the council, the strategic plan for sanitation district, if you would like to look at it and offer, uh, any, because they're looking for input from us with regards to the long-term plan. They, they do this every five years and, uh, so if there's anything that you'd like to offer in terms of input, well, then happy to share it with you and do that. And also, I wanna extend an offer to all of you, uh, to, to take a tour of, of the sanitation district and want to either plant one or plant two. It's fascinating, the things that they're doing these days are, are just amazing and the organization is just top-notch. So if you get a chance and want to, I'll, I'll help arrange it for you, uh, if you'd like to take a tour. And most of the current projects that are underway right now are not in Villa Park. They're in other cities, so it's not really relevant to, to what we're doing, so. Fire Authority?
Thank you, Mayor. On, uh, June 14th, I attended the budget and finance meeting and, uh, items of, for discussion were the community risk reduction and miscellaneous fee schedule, which was unanimously approved. Basically, fees that are charged for routine inspections, um, more of a, a common sense matter type item. And then, uh, also the fire risk program, which the state of California.
Not a fire alarm?
Alarm going off?
The library alarm.
Okay.
And we've had, they, they have some problems last couple of days about it, so they're aware of it.
Okay. Uh, just, so the fire risk program, which the state of California is going to adopt, a local program that was such a success in fighting fires, that it is being looked at by the state. In fact, the state want, is going to reimburse us $5 million. So it's a, a cost neutral, um, item for us to help them manage. And, um, that was it for the 14th meeting. On January 22nd, or excuse me, June 22nd, we had the regular meeting of the budget, or of the, uh, board of directors, excuse me. And I'm very pleased to say that we finally have approved all bargaining unit agreements, which is huge. I, I think that the taxpayers wound up, um, on the better end of, of everything. We had, um, most of these items pass with, uh, let's just say, there was equal amount of frustration on both ends. And when you, when you negotiate contracts, if people aren't happy on both sides, you've probably done a good job. So I'm very proud of our board, our staff, um, our bargaining units, uh, for, uh, negotiating in good faith. And I think we're, uh, we're in good terms moving forward. That's about it.
Uh, library advisory board, there was no meeting. Orange Unified School District?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So there was no, um, city schools committee, but I do have some school news. So as you may have noticed, Villa Park High School is in the thick of summer construction with several projects going on at this time. The storm drain and solar projects are the two with the most impact on parking. Impacts on parking at the high school mean impacts to our city streets as parents and students are forced to find parking elsewhere. The storm drain project will take us until the end of July. So anticipate difficulty until then. Um, there's also a lot of excavating, which almost always causes utility issues on the campus. We have had several water line breaks already this summer, causing the water to be shut off for long periods of time. And this is having an adverse effect on our athletic fields at the high school. On Friday, June 23rd, the entire campus was without power. This was done purposely so that they could make connections with the solar project and the school anticipates at least one more intentional power outage. Um, the 10200 building, which is that building, the two-story one with frontage to Taft Avenue, um, the bathrooms in that building have been both abated and demolished. The library is currently under abatement and is also under demolition. The Performing Arts Center, which is the big building closest to the parking lot, um, has had the lighting system demolished and the ceiling tiles replaced. The next step is paint and flooring. All of these projects are facing tight deadlines and parking will be negatively impacted for the rest of the summer, which will bleed onto our city streets. Um, there are also projects going on at Saravilla, VPE, um, and Serrano. But for VPE and Serrano, um, they're still in the planning stages, so it's unlikely that they will affect anything for the summer. VPE will be getting a new shade structure and Serrano is getting a new shade structure as well as HVAC improvements that will be going out to bid in July. Um, Saravilla is getting new flooring, paint and lighting in their performing arts center slash cafeteria, which is fondly referred to as the cafeturnasium. Um, traffic in the surrounding community though should be unaffected as all materials and vehicles will be, um, confined to the campus. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
The act?
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Cool. Uh, Villa Park Community Services Foundation, Jordan?
The foundation is hosting the annual.
The foundation is hosting the annual Fourth of July parade, starting from high school, starting at eight-thirty to ten o'clock, and also they have planned for concert in the park at high school, July twenty-first, from six PM to nine PM. The cover band is eighty days. Hopefully, every family member will come, and all the residents will come out and participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Housing Legislative Committee?
No meeting.
Bridges?
We have a meeting tomorrow, here, actually, we get to host.
Oh, cool. Senior Citizens Advisory?
So June is dark for senior citizens advisory, but there's, doesn't mean that we still don't do stuff. So there's two flyers, I'm going to let Alyssa choose which one she wants first, doesn't matter. You choose. Okay, perfect, that's the one I would have wanted. All right, so just wanted to let everyone know, there's a balance and stretching class, the Council on Aging Reconnect Program, and it's a multi-dimensional approach to balance-related problems. It's suitable for older adults who are beginning to have trouble balancing. You learn various exercises and stretches and tips to provide, provided to help prevent falls, and the best part is, is it's free, and it's a twelve-week program. It starts July seventh, and it goes until September twenty-second. We're going to have this flyer on our feeder, so you can call to register, space is limited, but this is a great opportunity for our seniors to be able to, to start, you know, interacting and address some of the mobility issues and balance issues. So I'm really excited to, you know, have our seniors, older people, participate in this. And then the next one. So we talked a little bit about this, about, and it goes in line with the fentanyl issue, which we'll also do a little blurb about at the September Fentanyl Town Hall, but we talked about with seniors and, and how a lot of them live on fixed incomes, and that it's, you know, they're finding ways to cut costs. And so one of the ways is they buy prescription drugs over the internet, and not all prescription drugs purchased on the internet are legitimate and sold, and we're seeing an increase in deaths, poisonings from fentanyl-related deaths due to these fake prescription drugs. So this is a flyer that'll go on the website, and there's a website there, the FDA.gov/BSafeRx or BSafe Prescription, and this is teaching you how to recognize a safe website to purchase your, your pharmaceuticals from online and versus the fake ones. So this is more of an informational, kind of a, you know, a public announcement of, you know, please take a look at this, especially if you're a caregiver, or you're someone who orders drugs for your family members, to make sure that you're, you are buying from legitimate sources. So that'll go on the website, too. That's it.
Thank you. Now, well, here individual council member information items or announcements, let's start with Councilwoman Jones.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So within the last month, I attended a tour of the BeWell Orange Campus. BeWell provides mental health and substance use services and programs for our Orange County and Villa Park residents. BeWell brings together different organizations, such as academic institutions, faith-based organizations, as well as public and private entities in a cooperative partnership to eliminate barriers to care. It was fascinating, not only to see the campus they have established and the services they provide, but also to hear about their plans for additional facilities and hear about their mobile response team. So I would like to extend our thanks to Catherine Hamel and Lauren Brand for being so welcoming and spending their time with us. I also attended the ACCOC Housing Committee at the end of May, and in addition, attended the open house for Finnamore Place, also hosted by ACCOC. This is a new affordable housing development for Anaheim families. It was extremely impressive and includes a pool, rooftop deck, play equipment, and onsite services such as St. Jude Neighborhood Health Center, a child guidance center, and Orange County Head Start. So, and finally, I would like to thank our city staff for a very informative coyote town hall last week. We received some good information. For example, I had no idea that coyotes were not nocturnal. But please check out the video online if you missed it, since the presentation they posted has some valuable contact numbers if you spot a coyote that you believe to be sick, or if your pet is attacked, so, thank you very much.
Mayor Protem?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July coming up. Please be safe, please be careful. Along with Councilwoman Jones, I also attended the Coyote Town Hall, and that has been a significant bone of contention to many of my neighbors, and back in the day, I think I used to call Steve probably once a week on that from all the neighbors and, and on my street and the surrounding street. So thank you for getting that done for us. It was very educational for many of our residents, and we just have to keep fighting the good fight and haze the coyotes, there's nothing else we can really do, that's the bottom line. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
So, broken record here, so I also attended the BeWell, echo a lot of the comments that Councilwoman Jones. Finnamore Place, as Councilwoman Jones suggested or commented, it was, it was extraordinary, and it's, it was very impressive. Found out it was actually named after a woman, I think her last name was Finnamore, I think they told us that night, but I forgot the woman's first name, but something that, it was her passion and, and her, her dream and vision to have this kind of facility, and it finally came to fruition, unfortunately, she is already, she had already passed, but that's where the name Finnamore Place, and just some data that, to supplement with Councilwoman Jones, it's a multifamily housing, there's a hundred and two units, eighty-two working families, and then twenty formerly homeless, so, and, and it was very well done, very tasteful, and they pride themselves in that it's very much a part of the entire community, not just those hundred and two units, but that it's open to other community members in Anaheim as well. Also, the Coyote Town Hall, that was very informative, encourage you to watch the video as Councilwoman Miles Jones said. And then I was really fortunate enough to attend the Orange County Asian American Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Awards banquet, and was extremely impressed with the community, and this was done at the Marriott and Irvine, and the, they had something like two hundred thousand dollars' worth of grant money that were given to individual students that had to qualify, a whole bunch of parameters, but, you know, couldn't afford to go to college, and some of them, I mean, just they had four-point eights and four-point sevens, and, you know, attending the high, high academic schools, so it was really neat to be a part of that. Want to wish everyone a happy Fourth and a safe Fourth, and we won't see you in July, but I guess we'll see you in August.
Thank you. Councilman Wu?
Thank you. I have attended various events my fellow council member had attended, so I won't repeat that, but one thing I would like, two things I would like to mention, one is a personal thank to California State Assemblyman Philip Chan, provided a tour for me and my two daughters on July thirteenth, when we drove out to visit the Capitol. That was quite educational for my daughters to, to see. And speaking of mosquitoes, sorry, there was one tried to attack me, I don't want to come home with West Nile and affect you guys. But anyway, the, so I really appreciate that gesture, and secondly, I would like to wish everyone a happy Fourth, and please stop by the fireworks booth at school to purchase fireworks safely from the PFSO and also the high school football and marching band, and also at the Ralph Center that will benefit in the Rotary. I would say that everyone be safe and see everyone in August.
Thank you, sir. I won't repeat the different meetings that I went to as well, I went to the coyote one, but I did, the one over and above, on June sixteenth, I attended a breakfast meeting over here at Rockwell's with Congresswoman Young Kim. She had several mayors in attendance there, there were, I think there was a total of six or eight of us that, that attended, Dan Slater from Orange and several others attended. It was nice to hear what's going on in Washington and how that relates to us, but one of the things that she was going to do that day was she was attending a meeting with Speaker McCarthy and Todd Spitzer about the Chilean gangs that, that had been going around creating problems for many of the neighborhoods, so, and I was really surprised that one of the cities that were in attendance, the mayor spoke up and said that they'd been hit over eighty times. So, you know, one of the things we all talked about in that room was, you know, finding ways to make sure that your house is locked, it's safe, you've got cameras, turn them on. If you've got alarms, make sure they're on the first and second floor, because a lot of the entries are on the second floor that these gangs are, are doing, so. But she also indicated she wanted to set up a regular cadence with the mayors to, so long-term, hopefully beyond my tenure, that she will continue that as long as she's in, in Congress, so that we can learn more about what's going on up there and what, what we're doing here, and impart information about what we're challenged with here, like the housing element and other things, which she doesn't really have a whole lot of control over, but it was interesting to get her perspective and things like that, so. I want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. We are dark in, in July, but if anything comes up, I'm sure that Steve will alert us all, and if we need to, to meet, we can on a special meeting, so appreciate that. So now we'll adjourn the meeting until the next city council meeting on August twenty-second at six-thirty PM. Thank you for coming, and thank you for your participation, we appreciate it, thank you. We're adjourned.